Well, good evening, everyone. I will get us started by doing rolls. And so Barbara, oh, my name is Catherine Kramer. I'm the Town Planner. We're in the Development Office this evening, so you don't see the grand council chambers. All right, so, excuse me, Barbara Brenneman.
Hi, this is Barbara Brenneman. I'd like to open the meeting this evening of the Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. This is Monday, March 8th, 2021. In looking at the agenda, I'd like to note a few things. First of all, we don't have a flag in this room, so we are not doing a pledge of allegiance this evening, because we wouldn't do that without a flag. And secondly, under public hearings, Eliza Panet, which is number one under the public hearings, that has been withdrawn, so we will not be hearing that one. And also for anyone on the commission or anyone that is here to participate in 402 Farmington Avenue LLC, which is number three on the public hearings, that applicant has requested a further continuance to March 22nd, so that won't be heard this evening, won't be reopened this evening. And would that, I'd like to have our secretary do the call, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ah, we don't have anything to call.
We have.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, we're good. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, March 8th, 2021, at 7:00 PM on the following application. LT West Farms Police Hold LLC Application for Special Permit Medical Office and Office Uses Located at 500 South Road, BR Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the Town of Farmington's website at https://www.farmingtonct.org/about-us calendar-meetings. A copy of these proposals are online at https://www.farmingtonct.org/government-town-plan-zoning-commission-public-hearing-documents or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 19th day of February 2021. Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Barbara Brenneman, Chair.
Thank you, Inez.
You're welcome.
According to our agenda, we'll go back to new business. We'll begin with number one, Plaza 2020, request for an extension of approval of a special permit granted February 24th, 2020.
Plaza 2020, do we have Stefan on the line?
Wait, are we doing roll call, excuse me, are we doing roll call or?
We can.
Yeah, we can do roll call. I'll get that started.
Thank you.
Barbara Brenneman?
Present.
Patrick Carrier?
Here.
Michael Gabralis?
Here.
Matt Pogson?
Here.
Inez St. James?
Yeah.
Marcy Schwartz?
Here.
John Vibert?
Absent.
Keith Vibert?
Here.
And Scott Halsted?
Here.
Thank you. So we'll go to Plaza 2020. Is there someone here?
Yeah, we haven't.
We can move on and come back to it, in case they haven't signed in yet.
Yeah, I can also.
Hmm?
Thanks.
We'll go to number two, SignPro Incorporated sign application for property located at 3 Mountain Road.
Tracy, I saw you were on the call?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right, move on to yours.
I'm sorry to interrupt, it's Inez St. James again. Are you putting the slides up? For some reason, I'm not seeing them.
Putting the what?
The slides.
The slides.
Yep, we have the screen showing the application currently.
You're showing, what I am seeing, excuse me, is the call, what was posted in the, what I just read.
So go back to share screen.
Yeah, this is Marcy, I'm seeing the same thing.
Okay, yeah, there you go. Sorry about that.
No problem, thank you.
Okay. The church, St. James Episcopal Church, would like to replace their existing sign with a similar detached sign. They would like to place it at a 90-degree angle to the street, so currently it is parallel to the street, and they would like to change it, and that was approved in the historic We had had a couple of different.
Excuse me, Tracy, do you mind identifying yourself and send who you're with?
I'm so sorry. Tracy Becker from SignPro Incorporated, 60 Westfield Drive in Plansville, Connecticut.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is the artwork for the sign. It will look very similar to the sign that's there. I'm not sure if you have any questions about it. I mean, when we turn it, I believe the churches be splitting the electrical line. We have light on either side of the sign right now. There's just one light at the front of the sign, but since we're turning the sign, they're going to split that feed, and they'll have two lights, one on either side of it, so traffic in both directions can see the sign.
Commissioners have questions? Patrick?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Matt?
No questions.
Inez?
No questions.
Marcy?
No questions.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Scott?
No questions, thanks.
My only comment, this is Barbara, it's a two-sided sign this time, instead of a one-sided sign, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it'll be seen both north and south?
Correct.
Okay, that's the change, then.
Yes.
Does that affect any signage regulation that we might have? No? Okay. Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would the applicant like to add anything?
No.
If not, we're going to go ahead and vote. May I have a motion in a second, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to approve the application from SignPro Incorporated for property located at 3 Mountain Road, for new sign as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Marcy Schwartz, I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Withdrawn? Withdrawn, not withdrawn. Think about this, down the street, down the road here. Abstentions, please? I'm sorry. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We'll move on to number three, Farmington Fuel LLC Site Plan Application for 989 Farmington Avenue, Farmington.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Attorney James Ziogas, 104 Bellevue Avenue, for the applicant. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Farmington, this property is located in the BR Zone at 989 Farmington Avenue. It was previously specially permitted as a gas station convenience store back in March of 1995. This application is for a revision to the existing site plan to allow the new owner to improve and renovate the existing location. The property is in need of a facelift, and the new owner has a sense of plan to make it more attractive and inviting for customers. The property is serviced by City Sewer and serviced by the Connecticut Water Company. Connecticut Water Company did receive a letter from us in writing of this application and replied that it does not have any comments regarding the application. I believe the town was copied with that correspondence. The current entrances to the site will not change. They remain on the east and the west side of the property as it's located on Route 4. At the street line, however, there are going to be some improvements made. What we're going to do is we're going to take the sidewalk that currently exists, and we're going to align it with the sidewalks to the adjacent properties, so that the sidewalks will all be in the same plane. In addition to that, we're going to renovate the planting beds on the Route 4 side of the property, and we're going to revise it so that the plantings are going to be more salt resistant, and they'll be able to survive the winter plowing and salting operations from the state of Connecticut. The existing grades to the property will be maintained throughout the site, and our engineers from Kratzert and Jones are here to discuss that with you. As you enter the site, the most significant changes to the property will be the replacement of the existing canopy over the dispensers and the realignment and replacement of the dispensers themselves. Currently, the canopy is located about 10 feet from the property line, and by relocating the location of the fuel dispensers, we'll be able to move it approximately 19 feet from the property line. The dispensers, which currently operate in an east-west direction, will be turned to the north and the south and slightly angled to ease vehicles entering and exiting the site. By rotating the pumps, we'll be able to create a better appearance from the street. Instead of looking at the broadside of the pumps and the broadside of the vehicles that are being fueled, we will now see the narrow side of both. Additionally, under the existing plan, there was actually no parking on this site at all, so patrons of the store and employees were parking in any open areas of pavement as they accessed the store, either to be patrons or to go to work. As a result, there were no handicap parking spaces available to this site. What we've done is we've added five parking spaces to the west side of the building. One of those spaces is being handicap accessible, and behind those spaces, we're going to add four employee parking spaces as well. Those parking spaces will be not paved, but they will be pavers, permil pavers. On the east side of the building, we've added three parking spaces, and we've also included three electric charging stations in anticipation of meeting the needs of electric automobiles. And before we met, I heard the commission was indicating they had just gotten an electric car, so you certainly understand where the trend is going. I think GM has indicated that within the next 15 years, they're going to be without a carbon footprint, so all their vehicles will be electric, and this is one step towards accommodating the people with electric cars. To the south side of the spaces on the east side of the property, we've also added an area that patrons can sit while their car is charging, whether having food or coffee. We've allocated that space with four picnic tables, and again, there will be pavers in this area for convenience. So effectively, what we've done is we've added 12 parking spaces, four for employees and eight for customer parking. In so doing, the current site, which is currently paved, will be repaved, and the addition of the parking spaces will increase the impervious surface by approximately 871 square feet. Therefore, in accordance with your regulations, the commission will have to have a vote on this issue, because we're in excess of the 40% that is set forth in your regulations. We've provided a dumpster on the site, and for trash, and a separate dumpster for recyclables. Previously, this site did not contain either. We've provided a thermometric plan for site lighting, and I believe the applicant has discussed this with Mr. Seer, and he was satisfied with the lighting plan that we've set forth. The building itself will not have any renovations to the exterior of the building, with the exception of the sign that was previously approved by this commission on another application. We've received comments from Mr. Seer on two occasions. Kratzert and Jones, who's our site engineer, has addressed those comments in writing and submitted them to Mr. Seer prior to this meeting. Seb Bavino is online right now, and he's here to discuss the drainage in the site and the turning movements for vehicles entering and exiting the site. Seb?
Seb, you have to, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good evening. My name is Seb Bavino, planner of Kratzert and Jones and Associates, representing the applicant. I'm going to probably repeat a lot of the things that the attorney has mentioned, you did a great job going over them. The property is located in 989 Farmington Avenue in the BR Zone. This zone extends 300 feet south of our property line and more to the west along Farmington Avenue. To the east, we have a commercial use. The subject property has 200 feet of frontage on Farmington Avenue. Linola Drive by Saxar Property along the east side. The property is served by Public Water and Sewer, currently is used as a gas station convenience store. Portion of the property is in AE Zone, and some of it is in the X Zone in terms of flood areas. The property area is 3,135 square feet. The proposal is to continue the current use, however, to improve the site appearance and functionality, we propose to remove the existing canopy and pump islands, replace them, and arrange the islands to allow an easier access from Farmington Avenue. The existing fuel tanks will remain. To improve the parking, we proposed eight spaces for general use, three spaces for an EV charging station, and four spaces for employee parking. The parking for employees will be on porous pavers in front of the existing spaces. The existing grades will be maintained at this location and any other area where we are proposing improvements. Basically, the elevation will not change, so the direction to the construction contractor is to maintain the existing grade. We are upgrading the landscape by adding shrubs south of the employee parking at the item next to Linola Drive and along Farmington Avenue. At this location, salt-resistant plants will be used. In all locations, it will be low flowering shrubs and evergreens. The dumpster area will be fenced with a white fence, and a row of arboriviers will be planted around it. We are proposing four picnic tables on pavers in the shade of the pine grove. This will be used as indicated by the attorney, by people waiting for the charging station, and if they want to get something from a sandwich or something from the building, they'll be able to sit outside and enjoy the weather. Bollards will be installed for protection and to define the space of that area. A walk is proposed from the picnic area to the store, and that walk will also be with porous pavers. There's no change proposed to the interior of the building. The interior will be renovated. All lights are recessed, full cutoff, to be directed toward the ground. Lights to be LED. The hours of operation are planned to be from 4:00 AM to midnight. The refuse pickup is planned for weekdays after 6:00 AM in the morning. The fuel delivery will be off-peak hours as much as possible to avoid any problems with customers. The lights will be on during business hours. After that, all these safety lights will be in the store and under the building overhang outside the store. The existing vegetation on the west and along the south will be maintained. We received comments, we funded in writing, and revised plans to address the concerns. All the appropriate notes and details are on the plans. Prior to anything starting on this property, a meeting will be held with the town staff to go over details to make sure that everyone is on the same page in terms of erosion controls and construction sequence. The fueling truck, most likely, will come from the east. I-84 will be heading west on Farmington Avenue, and then coming in on the westerly entrance. The easiest way will be to come in on the westerly entrance at this location, and then come through the two pumps and make its way to the area where the tanks are. And we have provided turning movement map to the staff to show that's easily accomplished. Obviously, the smaller trucks will have an easier time, and the regular cars will have no problem. We have increased the spacing, the distance between the islands and the curbing in all areas. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be glad to answer.
Pat?
My question, it says here that the stormwater management, that that would be reported to the town annually. Who would be doing that inspection and the report for that?
Someone will be dedicated, a manager of the store will be assigned the responsibility to make that inspection and note anything, you know, make sure that everything is according to plans and report it to the town.
And the dumpster, so the dumpster there, that's my other question. So the white fence is along, and then you have that parking, so the truck is accessing from the front, right? There's no shield?
The truck is coming in from Linola Drive, right here.
Yep. Okay, so there's no shield from the road?
Well, there's a fence, there's a gate on it.
Right, to the side, but obviously, you have to get to the thing, so there's no, yeah, so you're basically driving in from Linola, pulling straight in. Okay, yeah, thank you, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Mike?
I have two questions. The first thing about the dumpster removal. I know this is a commercial area, but I think we try and usually try and stay consistent with the ordinance for noise, and would you guys object to after 7 o'clock for pickup?
In the morning?
Yep.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that.
No, that's not a problem.
Okay, all right, just, you know, try to be consistent across the board. And the other question, I'm sorry if I missed it, was about the storage of the racing fuel in the engineering comments?
Yeah, there's an area here to the west of the building that the applicant would like to have a cage with racing fuel. Racing fuel are those cans that people buy to improve the performance of the cars, so they'll be in a stack of, you know, like shelves out there, and there was a concern about spillage. They're not going to open the cans right there. There's no chance of spillage, but if the commission feels, we can add a concrete pad at that location. I had showing grass area to limit the amount of impervious, but we could show a concrete pad in that corner, small. I mean, the shelving is like 2 by 4, 2 feet by 4 feet wide, even less than that.
I think the only concern I would have with the spills is just, you couldn't see cars going some pretty crazy places. What is the protection from vehicles?
Well, we could put a bollard in that area to the south side of that handicap parking space, couldn't we, Seb?
Yeah, we could put a couple of bollards right in front of the handicap spot there.
Good idea. Yeah, I'm comfortable with that, just as long as there's protection.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, that was, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
So I have a few concerns. We've talked about the entrance of the trash truck coming into the dumpsters. Now, I'm trying to read the topography off of the map that's provided here that we're looking at right now, and it looks as if most of the numbers here are looking at like 187, no, I'm sorry, 167, 168, and then it goes all the way up to 170 as it goes around the corner on Linola Drive. Now, that area, I believe it has a bit of a slope to it. I mean, I'd like to believe the topographical numbers that are right here, but I make that corner quite often, and I know that it goes up quite a bit, so my concern is that as a trash truck is coming straight in from Linola, yep, exactly like that, they're actually going to be at a slight angle, probably even if it's only 6 to 8 inches of slope. I'm concerned that they're not going to come in level enough to really be able to hook onto those evenly, so I don't really know how to express my concern with that, other than I think it needs to definitely be, it needs to just be clear that that area really needs to be flat for a truck coming straight in. I don't know that it's going to be easy for a trash truck, and I know for a fact that those doors have been, the doors on the dumpsters there have been removed already because the trash trucks were having a tough time getting in there to get to those dumpsters, and basically, they used the front forks on the front of the trucks to knock those doors off on purpose. At least, that's actually what a previous owner had said at one point. So I know that that area is difficult for trash trucks, and I just want that to be taken into consideration, so we don't end up with an issue over there. Again, I don't really know how to phrase that in a way that we can make a motion to have something, you know, as a condition, but it just needs to be taken into consideration. Besides that, I have a major concern about the orientation of the canopy and the pumps, and we have, I can think of, and I've been trying to think of this, I think we only have two other gas stations in our town that are oriented like this. The Exxon that's over on Route 6, and I believe the Cumberland Farms might be that way over by Tractor Supply, but it's going to make it very difficult for people that are coming in from the east side to pull in, and as you've stated before, smaller vehicles, I think, will be able to pull in there okay, but this is frequented by trucks, it's frequented by Farmington Motorsports, it's frequented by a lot of larger vehicles, and you're going to have trailers, you're going to have things being towed, and to pull into that, if you look at page 13, I think, on the slides, it specifically even shows a larger vehicle pulling in would basically have to sideswipe somebody to get into the gas pump. I think it's page 13. A little further, maybe? So there's the larger truck, and it shows on the left there that to pull in, you would literally hit the vehicle that's in the other gas pump. So my question, I guess, is what's the reasoning behind? I know you said you didn't want to look at the side of cars as you're driving by, but it doesn't seem to be gaining anything by changing this orientation, and it seems to be more of like a public safety issue to have it facing in this direction. So I'm kind of curious as to what the logic is behind changing the orientation of these pumps, besides aesthetics.
If I may answer that question, first, the dumpster area. A handicap access area is 2%, which is 1 in 20, well, actually, 5% is 1 in 20. We have less than that in that area, and we are cutting the grades a little bit where the dumpster is. As far as the approach here, we try to show the worst condition. This truck here, the large truck, can fuel on the first pump, doesn't have to go in between the two. The reason for this is for aesthetic, you know, and makes it easier to come in from the west, but if the commission has a problem with that, we could just make them 90 the way most pumps are.
I guess my concern is, we're looking at just a truck here, and there are going to be people that have even just a trailer on the back, and if they're, let's just even say it's a person with a Subaru and a little, you know, trailer on the back, and they're pulling in there, they're going to jackknife around that, trying to come in from that angle, and I just don't know that it's a, I don't know that it's going to work out the way that, I do see, I saw the large truck coming through, and it seems as if you have to go straight through that one opening just to get your tanker truck through. You have almost no other option. If there's somebody parked at that spot when the tanker truck comes in, I'm not sure you're going to get anybody through. So I don't know, it just seems as if it's a, again, more of a safety issue, you're going to have to have, what happens, let's just say, if the tanker truck decides he's going to come in the other entrance by accident? he's going to come in the other entrance by accident? I don't know that that's going to, is there an example of that coming in the other side? They have to come in on the, so they got to come in on oncoming traffic in the Linola Drive area for them to actually be able to make that swing?
Yeah, we will direct the fueling truck to come on the west curb. That's what we like to have them do. We don't want them to come in from Linola Drive.
Just, again, I just see it being something that becomes a big safety issue and really unnecessary other than for some cosmetics, because I don't even know that you're gaining any pump space. So I know it's, to some degree, it's the owner's personal preference, but to me, again, I go back to it being a safety issue. So it sounds as if you're not necessarily adverse to it being the other way, it's just that for cosmetic purposes, you prefer it this way.
Yes, and to make it easier for the fueling truck to come in and pull in. But we could turn them 90 degrees. We'll pivot them to the center of the pump, to the center of the island, and we'll change it, if that's what the commission feels.
Okay. Well, we'll discuss that, I guess, towards the end. I would like to say the plans that were brought in initially to us, and then these are obviously all revised, these revisions are very, very, very nice. And I think, I really appreciate the time you put in. You obviously had a lot of time and engineering staff taking a look at this, and I do appreciate the effort that was put into that. So thank you. But other than that, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Inez?
I have no new questions. Everything has been covered. But I did want to also, the only thing I wanted to say was I do appreciate the documentation. I couldn't visually see what Matt is seeing. It just looked really, really tight. I love some of the improvements, though, like, you know, the area for people to just, you know, take a break, the electric stations, like, that was really thoughtful. But I guess we'll talk about the positioning. Thank you.
Marcy?
Sorry, I have no additional questions at this time. Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you. Keith?
No questions. Thank you.
Scott?
No questions either. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to have anything else to say before we move on?
I, you know, again, I think Seb has put a lot of time and effort into this, and so has Bruce, and we certainly appreciate it. We think that the turning movements that we've shown indicate that the delivery trucks can access this site. They're doing it now, and it's a tight site as we speak. In addition to that, I think if we did make those pumps perpendicular to Route 4, we could solve the commissioner's concern regarding access to those pumps, and we certainly would be willing to do that.
This is Barbara Brederman. I do have a question before we go to a vote. On the impervious change, what percentage did you go to with the final plan?
It was increased, it was increased by 3%. I believe it was 44.7 to 47.8. When I did the math, it came out to be about 681 square feet. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The new percentage is roughly 48%?
Yes.
47.87. So you can round it to 48.
Okay. Now, my second question is, on the canopy, are you putting LED lights in there?
I believe so, yes. They're shining down from the bottom.
Underneath the canopy will be LEDs, yes.
Okay. Are you aware that we would, as a commission, like to have dimmers put on those in case we find them overbearing? So that if indeed we had complaints about the intensity of the lighting, we would have the ability to instruct you to dim them.
Okay. I mean, I don't think that's a problem. From the lighting plan that I saw, it didn't look like they were excessive, but that remains to be seen.
It always changes when you turn them on. Then you really see what you have to deal with. So as long as you're willing to put dimmers on, that's acceptable.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to a motion, please, and a second, so we can discuss as a commission.
Madam Chair, can I ask one more question to the applicant?
Who's speaking, please?
It's Patrick Carrier. I'm just trying to understand the, I'm trying to understand the perpendicular that was just brought up, the pumps being perpendicular. What exactly was the reason of giving them a slight angle? Is it only aesthetics, or was there another purpose for that?
It's aesthetic, and it makes it easier for the traffic coming from the west to come through. A little easier.
Pass it through the west.
Okay, so you, okay, so you were anticipating that most of the traffic coming in would be from there? Yeah, the morning, the morning traffic would come from the west.
Yep.
Okay. So you figured, okay, so by turning them, it would be the majority of the traffic, I guess, being in the morning, it would make it easier. But then on the other side, it would make it harder. But that was worth it because of the amount of traffic? Yeah. But again, perpendicular works, and we can certainly do that if that makes people feel more comfortable. Yeah, yeah, and I heard you guys say that, and I was just trying to understand it. So, yeah, no, thank you. That clarifies. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. We need to have a motion and a second, please.
Just to open this up to discussion, this is Matt Pogson, and I move to approve the application as presented.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Inez St. James, second.
Okay, discussion? Patrick?
No, I mean, I do agree with Matt as far as perpendicular. I was just trying to understand it. It does seem like, yes, from one direction, it flows for sure, but the other, it hurts. So you're almost, it seems better perpendicular.
Okay, Mike? Discussion?
No, I think one of my points have been covered. Just for the commission, just so it was clear, I said 7:00 AM for the dumpster. Is that what we've been going with?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, additional?
I think one thing that's worth noting, just from, again, an inside perspective, I was really excited to see that they were going to have the racing fuel, which is a major, a great thing, I should say, for any landscaping companies, anybody around that has small engines. It's what most guys would prefer to use in those circumstances, which, again, goes back to my concern, honestly, because of the fact that bringing a trailer in there is going to be nearly impossible with a truck. So, I mean, you get a landscaper, and you're going to get a lot of landscapers if you have racing fuel, because nobody else is providing that around town. So that's going to end up being a huge draw. And I really do believe that having them perpendicular would be very helpful for all those people. So I'm glad to hear that the commission seems to be on board with that idea. And I'll make amendment to the motion if everybody else feels the same.
Thank you. Inez?
I agree with the change you're proposing, Matt. I had to look up what a racing fuel was, so I'm glad you're excited, but now I know. Yeah, it makes sense, I think, from the safety, but all the other changes, I think, are wonderful. And with applicant working with the town staff, I'm comfortable with approving this application.
Thank you. Marcy?
Yes, so I absolutely agree with Matt as well. I think the other thing we need to not lose when we make the proposal is the bollards that we were talking about in front of that fuel to prevent any unexpected trucks going into that pile of...
Yeah, that's agreeable to us.
Okay. Well, it just has to be part of the amendment as well, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Keith, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add. I agree with both Mike and Matt in their suggestions. I think I agree.
Scott?
No, nothing to add. I also agree with the comments that have been mentioned.
Okay. Matt, since you're the instigator of this, would you like to instigate an amendment to your motion, please, that includes the changes that the commission seems to be in consensus on?
I'll give it a shot. I would like to amend my motion to include the engineering report from March 5, and that all the items that were brought up in that engineering report would be addressed. I'd also like to add that the time for the trash pickup will be posted at 7:00 AM. And a bollard or whatever the planning department seems fit to protect the fuel area, and I'm talking about the racing fuel area cage, will be installed as well. And I believe, oh, and that dimmers will be installed to take care of any excessive illumination from the canopy. And lastly, that the direction of the pumps will be perpendicular, or parallel, rather, to Route 4, and will change from their current position, which will be handled and addressed by the planning staff. I hope that covered everything.
Nice job. Yeah, that was great.
Madam Chairman?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold on. One at a time. The planner has a question. Can you clarify? You said perpendicular and then parallel?
Yeah.
I apologize. It would be, the pumps would be parallel with Route 4. I would consider them to be perpendicular right now. Is that correct? What, is there a terminology you prefer I use?
They're angles now.
So right now, they're on a, they're at about a 5 degree, 5 to 10 degree angle, Matt. So they're, the cars are coming almost directly head in, but not quite. So I think the, my understanding, when you said perpendicular, is that we'd get rid of that 5 to 10 degree kink and literally put them so they're straight north-south?
Sorry. I apologize.
The cars will come head in, so that it's equal opportunity for vehicles traveling eastbound and westbound to access them.
How about this, that the pumps remain in the configuration that they are in currently?
No, this is a new plan. This is a new plan.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, no, because what, so, and what everyone just agreed to was to rotate them just the 10 degrees, so that they are perpendicular, they're straight up and down, perpendicular to...
90 degree angle to Route 4.
To Route 4, so that the cars are coming in, and the cars are in a north-south direction, not in an east-west.
I did not think that's what we were all agreeing on. I thought we were keeping them the way that they are currently.
No. Because you said perpendicular, sorry, but yeah, I think we'd have to go through everyone to get that consensus, but I don't...
The consensus was, my interpretation, Matt, was the consensus was they were going to be 90 degree angle to Route 4.
Oh, okay. I was under the consensus, I was under the assumption, I guess, that they were going to be parallel as they are currently with Route 4. So I guess I rescind, I rescind my amendment, and I suppose we need to have some discussion to clarify that with everyone. My assumption was that they were going to be parallel with Route 4 in the current configuration that they are now.
No, that's not what, they're presenting a diagonal.
Correct.
And so we have to ask them to do it parallel or to do it in a 90 degree angle to Route 4. It's one or the other. And it has to do with the commissioners and how you feel about it.
May I ask that the applicant clarify what they were, what they were thinking? Because I almost felt that they were agreeing to it being parallel with Route 4.
No, not, no.
We're in a motion, wait a minute, we're in a motion and a second. We can't go back to the applicant for conversation at this point. We would have to, we would have to rescind the motion and go back to the applicant and ask the question. So if you'd like to rescind your motion, we'll go back to the applicant and ask the question. When they talk about a straight line for those pumps, which straight line is the applicant finding acceptable? Is it 90 degrees?
I think that that would be reasonable. Sorry.
All right, let's rescind your motion.
I rescind my motion then, at this time.
And your seconder must do the same, please.
Yep. Inez St. James, I rescind the second.
Okay. Now, let's go back to the applicant and talk about which way the applicant finds it workable for them.
It's perpendicular to Route 4, so that we would take that angle and straighten it out like the town planner had just suggested. We'd rotate it about 5 or 10 degrees, so that they'd be running in a north-south direction.
So it would be a 90 degree angle to Route 4?
That's correct.
Okay. Does everybody understand that? Any other commissioners have a question about that?
No.
Okay, let's go back and get a motion and a second and get started again.
Well, since I made that mess, I'll make the motion. I move to approve the application with the engineering comments from March 5. I would also condition it to have the dumpster removal at 7:00 AM or later weekdays, and also bollards be installed to protect the racing fuel refill area that is next to the building to whatever specifications that the town deems acceptable to protect that. Also, a dimmer would be installed for the illumination of the canopy. And lastly, that the pumps would be changed to be perpendicular to Route 4, not at an angle as they are proposed currently. I think that covered everything.
Thank you. Inez St. James, second.
Perpendicular. Yep, we got it. Yep. Okay. Now, there is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the commissioners?
This is Matt Pogson. I'm just going to say, I did believe that it was parallel. I'm not sure that having it being at an angle or being perpendicular will be, will work for the movement of those vehicles. I was under the assumption we were talking about the other direction and being parallel the way that it was currently. So I have concerns about that, and I'm not sure that I can feel as if it is safe being in that direction. So that's all I have to say.
Are you saying you're not going to support your own motion?
Yes, I cannot support that motion.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. We, so that everybody knows, on the expansion of land use, it needs a 5-6 vote, because we are expanding the land usage to 48%. So we do have to have a 5-6 vote for that section of approval, which is part of the application. So when you talk about as presented, that is what is presented. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
That would be Matthew Pogson, opposed.
Abstention? Okay, so we have Patrick, Mike, Inez, Marcy. 1, 2, 3, 4. Normally, I don't do that, but I will vote as the sixth, as the fifth voting member to approve. So a motion carries with a 5-6 vote.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. All right, moving on to number four. Don Parsons, accept an application for a special permit for addition to the house in excess of 3,200 square feet of total area and an accessory apartment in excess of 650 square feet at 3 Doors Street in R20 Zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of April 12, 2021. I need a motion and a second, please.
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to accept the application from Don Parsons for special permit for addition to a house in excess of 3,200 square feet of a total area and accessory apartment in excess of 650 square feet at 3 Doors Street, R20 Zone, and schedule a public hearing for recommended hearing date of April 12, 2021.
May I have a second, please?
Matt Pogson, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We'll go to number five on the, under new business. We'll go to number five on the new, under new business, um, Exclusive Inc., accept an application for text amendment to the zoning regulation lists of prohibitive uses, remove Tattoo Studio, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of April 12, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
This is Inez St. James, I make the motion to accept the application from Exclusive Inc. for text amendment to the zoning regulations list of prohibited uses, remove Tattoo Studio, and schedule public hearing, recommended hearing date of April 12, 2021.
May I have a second, please?
This is Matt Pogson, and I second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstention? Motion carries. We'll move on to the public hearings, and as announced, number one, Eliza Panett at 287 South Road has been withdrawn, and 402 Farmington Avenue has requested a continuance to March 22nd. So, the only public hearing we have is LT West Farms Leasehold LLC, application for special permit to office and medical uses at 500 South Road in a BR zone.
Michelle, are you, uh, on, did you hear?
I am here, can you hear me and can you see me?
You're very faint, is there any way, or can you get closer to the microphone?
I will get closer, is that better?
Yeah. A little better.
All right, you know what, I can try to go to my headset, that might make it a little more clear.
There you go.
Oh, much better.
Much better.
Okay. All right. Um, I look funny, but you can hear me. Uh, uh, well, thank you very much. Um, Chairwoman Brenneman and members of the commission, good evening. Uh, my name is Michelle Maraska, I'm from the law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole in Hartford, and we're here tonight, uh, representing the applicant, LT West Farms Leasehold LLC, in its application to confirm certain permitted uses at the former Lord &amp; Taylor site at West Farms Mall. Uh, the applicants brought this application in the hopes that it may incorporate additional permitted uses at this site in order to complement the uses at the mall, as well as to meet the current needs and demands of our, of the modern consumer. Uh, before we get, move forward, I just first want to thank all of you. Um, I want to thank the commission and all the staff that has worked with us, uh, for helping make this virtual presentation a possibility. Um, and I also just want to take care procedural items, uh, making note of the various forms of notice that were provided for this hearing tonight. Um, as you know, there were two legal notices published in the newspaper, one on February 25th and the other on March 4th. Uh, in addition, there was written notice mailed to, um, all property owners within 200 feet of the site of this application, and there was a sign posted, um, at the South Road entrance to West Farms Mall that indicated, uh, the time of this hearing. Uh, so, tonight, uh, we'll give you a brief presentation for this application. I'll start with a brief overview. Um, I will then pass it off to Mito Dos, who represents the applicant, and will give you some background, um, as to what led to this application. Uh, and then Diego Villarreal, um, hopefully I said that right, Diego, uh, from JMC Site Development Consultants, will, um, talk with you about his work to look at traffic and parking associated with, um, the additional permitted uses. And then I'll just wrap it up for everyone from there. Um, so Diego, would you mind putting up the aerial photo?
I actually, I'm not sharing the screen. If it's possible, could I share my screen? I know it's disabled right now. Or if you could pull up the aerial photo, just, we thought it'd be good to have that up.
We have your application, and so we can share the application documents that were provided.
Great, yeah, if the aerial photo would be great. Thank you.
Yes, that's it, okay.
That's great, yeah, thank you.
Okay. And, and the reason, thank you for doing that. The, the reason I wanted to put this in front of you is I wanted you to see the site that we're talking about, which is the area outlined in red. Um, but also to remind you that this application is, um, isn't about a proposed change in the design or the footprint of this building. Rather, this application, unlike so many applications that you, you receive, um, is not seeking to change anything about the physical design of the building, it's seeking to ask the commission to confirm that certain uses are in fact permitted at this site. And specifically, we're asking for confirmation that a mix of office use, medical office use, and retail use is permitted in this location. So, we understand that once we've identified potential users or tenants for this site, um, there, there may be a chance that there would be, uh, a change in the design or that would require us to come back, uh, again before the commission, but at this point, again, all we're looking for is confirmation that that combination of uses is permitted at this site. Um, with respect to that, the mall is located in the business restricted zone, the BR zone, and, um, but, under the regulations, that zone permits business offices, research and development, medical offices, and retail stores and personal service shops by special permit. So, for this reason, we bring forward the special permit application to confirm that each of these uses is in fact permitted here at this location. Now, the reason for this, the, having this confirmation is essential to the work of the applicant to, um, have discussions with prospective tenants and users. They need the ability to speak with certainty that these types of uses are permitted, so that they can, um, assure a prospective tenant that they can come here for that purpose. So, with that, I'm going to hand it off to Mito, if you want to provide some background that led to this application.
Thanks, Michelle, truly appreciate it. Uh, Chairwoman and members of the commission, thanks for your time this evening, truly appreciate it. As you're aware, Lord &amp; Taylor had anchored the mall for over 38 years since 1983, and it's quite unfortunate that, you know, the doors were closed and they deceded the building, leaving the mall and the community with a large empty space. Um, we all understand the pressure that the department of stores and retail in general is under. Lord &amp; Taylor was not alone, many others, you know, have struggled and have tried for liquidation or reorganization, you know, lots of pennies in the market since 21, you know, the list is unfortunately just too long. Um, we appear before you today to request that you allow us the opportunity to explore ways to reactivate the site with additional permitted uses. While we don't have any interested parties as of yet, any approval tonight would allow us the opportunity to market the space for a use that is both permitted and does not compete with the existing retail use of the mall. More importantly, it will bring in a new user in the space to use, generating foot traffic for the existing retailers. In essence, our ask is a proactive first step towards incorporating additional permitted uses that would allow a now vacant box to meet changing market and economic conditions as well as customer needs and interest. With that, I'll turn it over to Diego from JMC.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mito, good evening all. Uh, just for the record, Diego Villarreali with JMC, uh, we're the engineering and planning consultants, working with the applicant during this initial phase of the project. And, a, as was described by Michelle and, and Mito, it's a little bit of a unique circumstance from our standpoint as well. You know, typically, we'd, we'd come in and, and look at the building box, make modifications to it to accommodate a new user, we'd look at the entrances, modifications to parking, et cetera, a, and, and be here presenting all those changes to you this evening. Um, a, as Michelle had indicated, the aerial photograph shows what our site plan looks like and what our site plan is proposed for the purposes of this application. There are no exterior modifications to the building, no modifications to the parking spaces proposed at this time, and if any of those changes were to be made in the future, obviously, we would have a revised application that would come back to this commission. What we were able to put together was just some supportive information, uh, with the uh, special permit application regarding traffic and parking, and we know that's two critical components to really any special permit application. And we looked at it from a couple of different standpoints, understanding that medical office and general office uses are both special permit uses in this zone, we looked at reoccupancy of the Lord &amp; Taylor space as either a, a full medical office use, which we think would be probably somewhat unlikely, just because, uh, but we wanted to be conservative and say, okay, if we looked at a full medical office use, which is the largest generator of traffic and parking, what would those numbers look like? And then we looked at an alternative that we believe is more realistic, which would incorporate a combination of general office, retail, and medical office. And we looked at a 50%, 25%, 25%, excuse me, 25% split, meaning that about 50% of the off, of the space would be dedicated to an office use, 25% would be dedicated to a retail use, and then 25% would be dedicated to a medical office. And what we did with that, we put together a trip generation comparison using ITE trip generation volumes, which is the basis for virtually all the traffic studies that we prepare, and, and what it does show is that during that peak AM hour, you would expect to see an increase in total number of vehicle trips. And again, with office uses or medical office uses, that would be fully expected, that's the table right there, perfect. Um, it, it's fully expected, because in the morning, retail uses do not generate a significant amount of traffic. Um, the retail uses typically generate their traffic during that peak PM hour or on the Saturdays and the weekends. And that's why when you go to the peak PM hour, when you look at the existing retail use at 121,000 square feet, and look at all of the proposed, um, uses that were included in our application, during the peak PM hour, you actually saw a net reduction in trips by one car, which is negligible at this case, it really is almost identical to the existing condition. And then during the Saturday hour, you saw a significant decrease. Obviously, retail is busiest during the weekends, and office and medical office generally tends to be, um, less busy, and you'll see less vehicle trips during those weekends. So, you see a significant decrease in expected vehicle trips on a weekend. We also looked at parking as it relates to your zoning code, to confirm that when we have 121,000 square feet of a retail use, uh, under your code, the parking requirement is 667 parking spaces. And when we look at a breakdown that was proposed of office, retail, and medical office, because office has a lighter parking requirements, it, based on your zoning criteria, it's actually a net reduction in total parking required. So, we don't run into a zoning compliance issue, we're not proposing a use that has a higher demand from a zoning standpoint, it is something that requires less parking than, uh, a retail use. So, this was the information that was compiled and summarized in the letter, and we thought it would just be useful when providing a comparison between the retail use and then the combination of the office and retail uses. Michelle, turn it back to you.
I didn't get it out, okay. All right, well, thank you, Diego. Um, so, I just want to walk through quickly the, uh, can, the criteria that the commission needs to consider when reviewing a special permit application, and I'm referring to Article 4 of your regulations, Section 12, um, and just go through and show you how we, we've addressed these criteria. Um, the first four of those criteria talk about, um, the character of the neighborhood. So, when reviewing this application, you're asked to consider the existing and future character of the neighborhood, um, in which the zone and use is located, and whether it will be protected, that adequate safeguards have been taken to protect the adjacent property and the neighborhood in general from detriment, um, that the basic design of the proposed user building, the relationship between the buildings and land and overall physical appearance of the proposed uses will be in general harmony, and I'm paraphrasing a little bit, and that in the case where, um, an application proposes increased density, um, the topography and other natural features are capable of accommodating that increased development density. Um, now, to a certain extent, these criteria, several of these criteria, um, are satisfied by virtue of the fact that, um, as we've noted, there's no changes being made, there's no proposed physical changes being made to the existing site. And because there's no change in footprint, no change in density, and no change in the design and the existing structure, that, that physical design is already compatible with its surroundings. Uh, but more fundamentally, uh, the, these, um, additional permitted uses, the office use and the medical office use, these are consistent with the nature of the retail uses there already, um, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, this is another commercial use that is conducted entirely within the building, um, and there's no additional physical impacts from this use, there's no additional noise, there's no additional truck trips, there's no additional pollution. Um, and in many ways, the office function, office use functions like a retail use. Um, if you were sitting inside or outside on a porch of any one of the surrounding residential properties, um, on any given day, you would, you know, find it very difficult to detect that there was any change in use, um, between, you know, medical office or office and the retail uses going on. Um, based on Diego's analysis, perhaps the, the change that you would find is that you would notice maybe less traffic on the weekends, and maybe some additional trips during the week. Um, so, um, the other criteria that you're asked to consider have to do with what Diego focused on, which is traffic and parking and circulation. Um, you're asked to consider whether the, uh, traffic circulation for the site, um, is adequate, and whether the road network, um, that's impacted by the development is adequate. Um, again, I'm, I'm not going to repeat back everything Diego just went through, but, um, under both scenarios that were considered, um, you know, it was found that the, the existing parking and circulation, um, on-site is suited to absorb the, um, either development scenario, and inasmuch as the existing road network, again, because we're not changing the, um, the nature of the use in a dramatic way, the existing no road, no road network is already suited to, um, absorb that, um, those uses. Um, and I, I think sort of one of the take homes is that where there may have been some increase, where there may be some increases in, um, daily trips, those happen at a time when you would typically see less trips for the retail uses there already. So, there's, um, you know, there's a give and take there between, um, the uses. Um, a, and the last criteria under your regulations that you're asked to consider is public services, whether the required public services will be, um, available to serve the proposed development. Um, well, given that the material, the, the mix of uses that we're talking about does not materially, materially change the number of uses at the site, doesn't increase capacity, uh, we anticipate that the public services will be sufficient. Um, so, the...
What does the regulation say?
Um, now, I just want to close with just two observations. Um, uh, the, the first is that, um, taking a look at your plan of conservation development for the East Farm section of town, which is where we're located, um, there is a policy in the plan that, um, speaks to, uh, limiting the expansion of retail uses while, um, encouraging other non-residential uses. Uh, this application, which again seeks to confirm these additional, um, non-residential uses are permitted at this location, it, it aligns with that policy. And, and last, um, the, the last point I think we'd like to make is that this proposed mix of uses really can only benefit the town. Uh, without this ability to diversify the uses at this location, uh, you know, there's a chance this, this site could remain dark, um, and that would have a potential, you know, a series of negative effects upon the mall and the town. Um, but keeping the site productive, reinvigorating the site, um, with putting it to use with, um, either with a service that will provide an amenity for the town's residents, such as medical office, or an office use, which could provide employment for the town, um, either way, it's a win-win for the town. Um, so, with that, um, we've, we've concluded our presentation, but we are, uh, more than happy to address any questions that the commission may have.
Commissioners, start with Patrick.
Uh, no, no questions, thank you.
Mike Grabulis?
I have a few questions, um...
I have a few questions. First, I don't know if you've shared with, with the town staff your, your marketing brochure at all, but I did happen to come across it, and I, I think that would be a, a helpful thing for some of the other commissioners to see. Is that possible?
We're happy to hear that. It's a, I just want to discuss that with you, Mike, real quick. We don't have really an interest in it right now, right? And the whole idea is to really to get the designation for office or medical office use and go to market with it. We do have a, call it a York factory program that is still in development, but it has not been completely developed as of yet in order to occupy the building.
Okay. So that was more of a generalized brochure that I saw?
That, that's correct.
Okay. You know, I, I have no, I, I see no issue with this. I mean, there, there's plenty of parking throughout the entire complex, and anybody who's going to the mall knows that, you know, not necessarily if you're going to the office, you're going to park over there. I don't see parking as an issue. The only other question I, you, you've guys have been in touch, obviously, with, with the, the parent mall company and related issues of security and stuff, their security staffing, have you guys gone over that with them at all?
It's still an ongoing discussion with the Taubman Group, but it's something that we are bound under the R E A to resolve with them. But they have been supportive, obviously, of seeing the building reinvigorated with the, a new user.
Okay. You know, you know, we had this discussion a few months ago, and clear this is the way that malls seem to be going, and it seems like this would be a good use to me. I have no further comments or questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Matt?
Actually, no, I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
I know.
All right. I don't mean to laugh at Matt, but, um, good job. I'm just conflicted. I guess life will never be the same. I don't know, this is, you know, COVID-driven, you know. It just, it just seems odd to me to have this, but maybe I've been in Farmington too long. West Farms, you know, has been a, a shopping place, place to meet, you know, you go shopping, you have a bite to eat. It ju, it just seems really odd to me. I, I have to process this, but, uh, and I understand the mixed use, but wow, I just, it, it just seems a little odd to me and, um, to have that kind of a use associated with it. I did some research on my own, and I guess Worcester Mall, I think, I don't know if that's the actual name of it, I have a link, has like a health, medical offices attached to it, and, uh, it's, I, I just Googled, so, you know, whatever that's worth. And I guess it's convenient, some people will, they have a bite, it's attached to a food court, so people go have a bite to eat, go do whatever at the doctor's office. But I don't, then I saw some, it ju, it just seemed odd to me. It's, I don't know, I can't formulate it, but it just seems really odd to take this, and maybe I'm missing Lord &amp; Taylor too much. I know, I know. But it just seems odd to me to have a medical office tied into this mall, upscale mall that we have enjoyed, you know, for, for decades. I don't have anything specific, though. So I guess, thank you.
Marcy?
Yeah, I, I actually am just, I'm looking at this aerial photograph, which is hard for me to transpose into what I see when I'm sort of in my car. Is the wider, it's all this, this red area, I, I see where you outlined it, is the white building the old Lord &amp; Taylor, and then next to it was parking?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. So it would be in the white building that there would be a proposed medical office, and the parking would stay and somehow attach to Nordstrom's, which, um, it's just hard to see from the roof?
No changes are proposed to the site itself. Parking will continue to operate as it does today with the surface parking and the garage spaces.
Okay.
And parking would not change. And the, and the red line, please understand, you know, the mall is one property, it, it's one overall property. The red really outlines the lease parcel or the track that's associated with the Lord &amp; Taylor use. In all honesty, it really has no relevance from a site planning standpoint because that line is somewhat invisible. The parking is looked at as a whole, for the center, and
Yeah.
...the traffic were looked at collectively for the entire mall. So we, we just wanted to put the red line in there just to highlight a little bit what the Lord &amp; Taylor parcel or track is on this property, which is what it does there.
Yeah, you actually just wanted to put it there to confuse me. But no, that, that helped, that helps me understand, and I, yeah, I, I think it's a good use. I think it's, it makes sense. Sadly, I know, I think it's somewhat the future, so, yeah. I'm all, I'm, I'm all good. Thank you.
Keith?
I have no questions. I agree with what's been said. This was sort of telegraphed to us earlier in the summer when they said they thought some of this property would be converted into office space, and I think it makes sense to me. I don't think it'll have a big impact on the area, so no questions.
Scott?
No questions. I'll just echo some of the comments that we've heard so far that we've known for a while we're going to have to get creative with mall space as the landscape changes. So I'm, I'm glad to see the beginnings of those kinds of thoughts.
Okay, thank you. This is Barbara Brenneman. I have a couple of questions, and one of them is, have you ever considered senior housing in the mall? I have a California brother, so I know what's going on in some of the malls in other parts of the country. But was that something that was considered?
It's, we're, we look at the asset in general. However, we haven't really considered that at this time, not, not for senior housing, no.
Okay. Thank you. Just curiosity if it was ever on the table, because I know it's on the table in other communities. My, my next, and it's a concern for me, Lord &amp; Taylor, the mall is in a B R. zone, and one of the things that's allowed is personal services. And I, I sit here concerned about how that could be defined if we open up this whole building. And, and I realize the mall now provides some personal service in beauty shops and nail salon, that kind of thing, but personal services is a pretty broad range that could be interpreted by many applicants. And so how do you feel about having to come back to us with anything other than what is there now in a personal service? If you're allowed to have a beauty shop, if you're allowed to have a restaurant, if you're allowed to have a nail salon, but going beyond that, almost any applicant that wanted to define their business as personal services could come in under this zone. And since your application is really defined as office and medical office, are you willing to limit it to that so that we can clearly define personal services if anyone comes in for a personal service?
If I may, can I ask it differently?
Yeah.
Is there, is there any personal services that you would not want us to have?
Um, yeah. There are some that we might not like. Um, you know, I'm not sure I'd, I'd want to define them here publicly, but I know in the past we have turned away some personal services.
Trust in the fact that we have been part of the community for over 38 years, and we're not letting go of our asset, and we will not bring anything to the asset that would really harm the mall in any fashion.
And if I could add to that just real quick as well, not that, personal services, please correct me if I'm wrong, is a special permit use within the zone?
Yeah.
Yeah. So i, if there was a personal service establishment that was being proposed, today we're talking about office, that's what our application is for. So it's really limited to the offices itself. In, in the future, I, I think you're getting what you're asking for by just the nature of your code. Because it is a special permit use, we would have to come back because we didn't even identify that at this point, so.
I just really wanted it on the record so that we, if anybody could look back and say it was discussed, and that if anything is beyond office or medical office and goes into personal services that are new and unique for the mall, it'd have to come back to us.
The, the only thing I just wanted to say were, for example, physical therapy is not personal service, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Phys, physical therapy, we would consider medical
Medical.
Because you need a medical degree in order to perform those
That would be attached to medical.
Services.
No, I believe we're in good shape.
Okay. That, that is my only concern, and if, if that is on the record, then I'm comfortable with that. Before we go any further, does the applicant wish to add anything else before we vote?
Really appreciate your time, can I? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Um, we need a motion and a second. Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon, I've done it again. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone in the Zoom meetings that would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this application? If so, please raise your hand now and be acknowledged.
In the Zoom chat function, you should have the ability to raise your hand. I'm looking at the participants, and nobody's raising their hand. Give you another moment. I don't see anyone.
We don't see anyone.
Okay. Oh, wait.
What, is that one?
We have one.
Okay.
Colavacchio, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hello?
Hello? Can you address, address this and say who's speaking? Identify yourself.
My name is Marie Colavacchio. I live on Romano Court, and the notice was served to my parents, Andre and Maria Romano, so I'm speaking on their behalf.
Okay.
And I just, my, our concern was is actually, and I want to thank Barbara Brenneman for acknowledging that, just being careful as to what they were going to put in there because it really is right in her backyard, and just want to make sure that what is in there will still be safe and, um, just, I just, thank you for, for acknowledging that, and just as long as we keep it, you know, medical and business sort of stuff, that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you for participating.
Yes, and it is awesome. No, it's nice to know that that's not going to be empty. We really appreciate that, too, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Someone, yeah, oh, whatever. Anyone else? Have another moment?
All right, hearing none. We'll move on to a vote. I need a motion and a second, please.
This is Matt Pogson. I'd like some clarification. Is this going to be voted on as Scenario A versus Scenario B, or is it for either one of them?
Explain your question, please. What do you mean?
The, I don't know about you guys, but it keeps kicking back with some feedback on my end of things. The, it was a Scenario A and a Scenario B that was written for us to talk about. One of them was all medical versus office and medical. Does that sound, that was in the planner's report?
That, that was the traffic analysis. Excuse me, I'm sorry. It's okay to speak right now. Wanted to answer the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, i, i, that's in the traffic analysis. There were two scenarios that were analyzed, I believe that's what's being referred to, was the full medical office versus a combination of retail, medical office, and general office.
So for clarification purposes, we would be, motion to accept medical and, and business? Or how, how is that going to be phrased? I, I guess I, I'd be happy to make a motion, but I'm not quite sure exactly what it would be in this case.
It's a motion as presented in the public hearing for special permit to office and medical office uses, is what they have asked for.
Correct. Matt, those were examples. So when we spoke with them, we asked for examples of how these uses could potentially impact the traffic and parking at this location, understanding the space that was available. So I mean, obviously, there's probably an infinite number of permutations with this. So they just took a shot and said, okay, you know, using a best guess of how this space could be broken up, and provided two scenarios that basically show there's really no net impact from a parking or traffic standpoint. So that's really, that was really the, the gist of that. And then when they come back and have an actual tenant, then it, it won't be a public hearing because the use has already been permitted, but it still will come in as far as site plan, and it'll, they'll have to demonstrate the parking for the specific tenant mix is working, that access, et cetera, all those specific parameters that we would normally see with a site plan would get a deeper evaluation at that point in time. Does that help?
Yes, that clarifies it. I was, I'm, I had it more solidly than that, so I was looking at it as those were actually two scenarios that were being proposed. With that said, I feel confident I can make a motion. I make a motion to accept the application for special permit to office and medical office use at 500 South Road, B R. zone.
You have a second?
Enes Saint James, second.
All right, discussion? Patrick?
Uh, no, I'm good, thank you.
Mike?
Uh, no, no discussion, just as reiterating what I said earlier, I think that this is, this is a good use for, for the area, and, you know, I don't think the, the owner has any nefarious intentions as to what he's gonna, what they're gonna put in there, but as it was also stated, they would have to come back for a special permit as well.
All right. Matt?
No, thank you very much.
I know.
Just a comment. You know, the truth is that the brick and mortar retail is dying, that we know, and that it's just a matter of time before our beloved mall, I, I love West Run's mall, will be repurposed, hopefully not demolished, and I'm okay with this change.
Marcy?
I am all set. Thank you.
Keith?
Nothing further, thank you.
Scott?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
You, too.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Two things, Madam Chair. Correspondence with Attorney D. Crescendo, I know we've announced that 402 Farmington Ave LLC is not moving ahead. For the record, it would be cleaner if we could actually have a motion to continue, a formal motion to continue in second, if, if we could, please.
Okay, there's been a request for a motion to further continue 402 Farmington Avenue LLC to March 22nd. It makes it a little cleaner in the records, please. I need a motion and a second.
This is Matt Pogson. I make a motion to further the continuance for 402 Farmington Avenue LLC to the March 22nd, 2021 meeting.
Thank you. A second, please.
Enes Saint James, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you.
I believe the attorney for, for Plaza 2020 is on. So if you don't mind, can we go back to
Say that again?
Plaza 2020, the first
Oh, they have come up, they have, they have arrived.
Back them down and honestly, I'll, well, that was a miscommunication on staff's
Back them down and honestly, I'll, well, that was a miscommunication on staff's part. So we, we.
For the sake of the commissioners, we bypassed Plaza 2020 because there was not a respondent here at the time. Somebody is here now to represent them. Would like to go forward with that, please.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Attorney Stolarz. Thanks for having me on. I just, just got this email. So, but the, if you remember, we were in front of you guys about a year, a year ago, it was the end of February. It was right before, you know, the world turned on its side, I guess. And so tonight, we're asking for an extension. It looks like we need about six weeks or so before they can start to put the foundation in. Basically, you know, as the pandemic hit, it really hit Mr. Ju's businesses really hard. So he had, you know, some, some finance issues in the beginning. And then, of course, you know, that kind of steamrolls into getting financing with the bank. But some of his businesses were shut down for a while. So that's back on track. You know, all the financing is in place. They have a, you know, they have a signed contract with Gino Carrier, Carrier Construction. Everything is lined up. It's just that he was kind of set back for a while here. So we're just looking for just a short extension on that.
Could you give me the address of this, please?
Uh, you know what? It is, I'm sorry. I wasn't anticipating being on, but it's 50, it's 545658 Farmington Ave. And.
I'm sorry again. 54, 56, and 58 Farmington Ave.
Okay, thank you. Somebody's going to ask her that. I wanted to make sure I knew.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do the commissioners have any questions about this?
Mike Grabulis, just confirming, there's no changes to the site plan.
There are not. To staff's knowledge, Mr. Stolarz, could you confirm, please?
Uh, I do not believe that we've had any, any changes that we've put forward to anyone at the town at this point.
Correct. Thank you. They've addressed a lot of the staff comments. So I know Bruce had been working back and forth with them to address the conditions of approval from a year ago, now that they're ready to move ahead. But the plans are consistent with what had been approved a year ago.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I need a motion and a second to extend the approval. Are you saying six weeks is sufficient?
You know, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, if, yeah, I mean, if we could do eight weeks, I mean, again, I anticipate about six weeks, but just in case, so we wouldn't have to come in front of you guys again.
Would you be comfortable with at least 90 days?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let's have a motion to extend the approval for 90 days from the date of February 24, 2020, from, to 90 days from today. If that's the motion, I'd like a motion and a second, please.
This is Inez St. James. Thank you for sharing the address because I was trying to find out what was Plaza 2020. And now I know it's next to the Central Wheel and the gas station. So thank you. Yeah. Okay. So hopefully I won't butcher this one. All right. So it's Inez St. James. I make the motion to approve the request from the applicant for an extension of approval of a special permit that was granted in February 24, 2020, for another 90 days from today.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
This is Matt Pogson. I second it.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was there? Did somebody want to make a, have a discussion? I thought I heard a mumbling. No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll go on to planner's report.
Um, so we've been in communication with the town attorney regarding 155 Brickyard Road. We have not yet received his report, so we will share that when it is available.
Thank you.
Um, the second item on the planner's report is the Affordable Housing Plan update. I have been in correspondence with the commission, with the live Affordable Housing website. We published that last week and there is now a survey available on the website for you to fill out information regarding affordable housing and the need and values of the community. So I suggest the whole commission fill out the survey as well as share with other Farmington residents. It will be live until March 23, which is when we'll start analyzing the data. There will be a public meeting on March 30, where we'll start to share the findings of the survey and continue the planning process.
Who hosts the March 30 meeting?
Um, that will be in conjunction with SLR, who is our Affordable Housing consultant.
They are hosting the meeting?
With the planning, Affordable Housing Planning Committee. It's a mouthful.
So this is not, we, I was a little confused. I saw it. I still have to take the survey. I mean, the write-up is fine. I thought that the information, like, you know, the values, everything associated with what does it mean to be affordable, low income, all that. I thought it was well done. So it's, it's not, has nothing to do with TPZ, though, right?
Correct.
Not.
We're looking for your involvement.
Not yet. So not, yes and no. So like any planning document, so we're working, rather than town staff working on creating an affordable housing planning document, like we have our P O C D, our Plan of Conservation and Development, right? And Bill Warner had worked.
Yes.
Had taken things and pieces and had worked with TPZ on pulling this together. We, because this is a new initiative from the state to put an affordable housing plan together, we haven't done this before, we went to consultants to assist with getting this pulled together. So this is kind of step one in about a three-month process that's going to take place. So they've, they're, at the same time that they're requesting residents of Farmington to complete the survey, they are also synthesizing housing data for Farmington and our zoning and pieces of the P O C D and other documents in an effort then to help develop the Affordable Housing Plan, which is a planning document that ultimately will come before TPZ and will need approval and endorsement, just like our Plan of Conservation and Development does. So.
That was perfect. Thank you. I was missing that. I was, I.
No problem.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
No problem. So, so yes, you will. And so to the extent you can be involved all along, when there's public meetings and, and public opportunity for, for solicitation of comment, it's going to make that end meeting a whole lot easier.
For sure. Thank you. Oh, that was perfect. I got it. It's framed in my head. I got it. Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, anything else? From the planner? Nothing? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Um, I need a motion for the minutes, please.
It's Inez St. James. I make the motion to approve the minutes of February 22, 2021, for Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
A second?
Marcy Schwartz, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You are adjourned. Good night.
Have a good night.